Okay, we are going to get started with our work session this evening concerning DMTRS. I am going to turn it over to Dr. Aheart and the team that he has to present to us. Board will have presentations and then we'll open it up for any questions that any of my board colleagues might have concerning the information they've heard this evening.
Okay. Shashank and I obviously are both here. Kathy McKay will be... Okay, now I'm audible, I think. Okay. Sorry for the delay. Shashank Aurora, our CFO is with us and virtually we have Kathy McKay, who's our Director of Employee Services. They've put together a PowerPoint presentation, the goal of which is to help sort of level set what DMTRS is because many of our board members are relatively new. I've discussed this plan with so many people from so many places. I've not found anyone who says, "Oh yeah, I've heard of a plan like that before." So it's confusing and the more we talk, the more you'll say, "Yes, it's confusing." The issue that we have is that we have a group of employees who are being served under IPERS, the Iowa Public Employee Retirement System. And we have a different group of employees that are being served by the Des Moines Teacher Retirement System, or DMTRS. And DMTRS has been around for a very long time. In fact, it's been around much longer than IPERS has been. And even when, and so when IPERS came into being, most of the public entities in the state of Iowa who were eligible became IPERS members. Des Moines and one other institution didn't. Des Moines joined IPERS but also decided to maintain the already existing Des Moines Teacher Retirement System. Depending on when you joined the plan, it may have looked a lot different in comparison to IPERS than a DMTRS-IPERS comparison looks now. And so recognizing this several years ago, our former CFO, Thomas Harper, and I did significant work to sort of clean up the plan, get it out of the shoeboxes and then onto computers and make sure that we were in good fiscal shape. And then we had the goal of essentially closing the plan and with the ideal solution, which we were this far from, of moving all of our active employees, active DMTRS employees into IPERS with all of their years of service fully funded. At the 11th hour, IPERS changed its assumptions and all of a sudden the price tag went up by several million dollars and there just was no way to pay for it. So we've been back to the drawing board since then and the problem hasn't gotten any simpler. But we are determined to make some headway on this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Shashank and Kathy. I'll pipe in when I feel it's necessary and then we can have a discussion. And I have a few more sort of tidbits of information that I may share at the end as well as part of the discussion.
Kathy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Do you want to share the presentation? Do you want me to share the presentation?
I can share it. Can everybody see my screen?
Not so far.
There we go.
Now we go.
Got it? Okay. So I'm going to start as Tom said, which is kind of an overview of the Des Moines Teachers Retirement System. If I can get my screens here to all align. As Tom mentioned, this plan has been around for quite a period of time. The plan was officially adopted in official board capacity in 1953. As an alternative to IPERS, the plan has $240 million currently in assets. We have 840 retirees as of 6/30 of 2021 and 296 active employees. Now, when it says 296 actives, you will notice in parentheses, it also says 151 are actively employed. An active participant under the plan is anyone who has not initiated their pension benefits. So if you were a participant, you've left Des Moines as your employer, but you haven't activated your pension, you are still considered an active person within DMTRS. There are several differences between the DMTRS and the IPERS plan. And I just wanted to highlight a few of them here for all of you. Both plans, the Des Moines Teachers and the IPERS, have employer and employee contributions. What is different is, the next box over, is that DMTRS has an age-rated contribution schedule. So let me just explain that a little bit. What that means is if you look at the schedule of contributions for the Des Moines Teachers Retirement System, there is a contribution rate for both the employer and the employee that is based upon the age you were when you entered the system. So that rate is the rate that you are entered into the system throughout your employment. So if you entered the system at age 24, you stay at the contribution rates for a 24-year-old throughout your employment. The difference on the salary schedule or the contribution schedule is the older you are at entrance, the older, the more money you contribute and the more money that the district contributes on your behalf. With IPERS, it's a flat schedule and is not age-dependent at all. So that's a key difference in the plan. IPERS is considered a defined benefit plan. So when I say a defined benefit plan, that means there's a formula that defines your benefit at the time of retirement. So I'm sure most of you are familiar with the Rule of 88 under IPERS. If you meet the Rule of 88 and then there's certain formulas that are applied to your benefit at the age of retirement and you can get up to a maximum of 65% of your highest years of employment salary at retirement time. So that's how a defined benefit plan works. Des Moines Teachers is not a defined benefit plan, but it's what we consider a hybrid plan, meaning it acts very much like a defined contribution plan in that for simplicity, it acts very much like a 401K plan in that you put in money and your employer puts in money and at the end you have a sum of money which would be allotted for your benefit. Then at retirement, it converts into more of a defined benefit plan in that you take that lump sum of money at retirement that's built up in your account and it's annuitized to provide you with a monthly benefit. Another difference in the plans is that IPERS is considered portable where DMTRS is not. And when I say portable, what I mean is if you are a new teacher coming into our district and you stay employed with our district for five, 10 years of your career and then you choose to leave our district and go somewhere else in Iowa and teach, your IPERS benefit moves with you. Des Moines Teachers is just what the name says. It's for Des Moines teachers. So if you choose to leave Des Moines schools and go somewhere else and teach, your benefit doesn't move with you and continue to grow. That alone has been, I would say, one of the big factors in enrollment in Des Moines Teachers over the past several years is times have changed. And when this plan started in the 1950s, people went to work for an employer and they stayed at that employer. People didn't move around near like they do now. And so that became a factor in people enrolling in Des Moines Teachers. IPERS also has earnings restrictions following retirement and DMTRS does not. So there's a little bit of a difference there. IPERS, for an example, if you are under 70 and you're continuing to work, you have an earnings restriction of $30,000 per year. Des Moines Teachers does not have that earnings restriction and that's with an IPERS-covered employer. Also, under Des Moines Teachers, there is no restriction on, once you retire, going to work for another IPERS-covered employer. IPERS does have that restriction and there's a time restriction of how long you have to wait before you can go to another IPERS-covered employer. And the final key difference is that in the past few years, we added an option to Des Moines Teachers to allow participants to take their money at retirement in a lump sum and IPERS does not have that option. Many of the participants under Des Moines Teachers had asked for that option, allowing them to take that lump sum of money and for them to invest the money and not be held to the annuities that would be purchased for them or done for them at the time of retirement through Des Moines Schools and Des Moines Teachers Retirement Plan. So that gave a little bit more options and gave the participant a little bit of investment control. But over time, as Tom said, we have noticed that there is a distinct difference in the benefits at retirement from an IPERS participant to a Des Moines Teachers participant. And so over the last years, we took some steps to look into Des Moines Teachers and IPERS doing a conversion of those participants that were in Des Moines Teachers and converting them to IPERS. And Tom had mentioned, we looked at taking those participants who were active participants in our IPERS plan or in our Des Moines Teachers Plan and moving them to IPERS with full vesting and full benefits under IPERS. That was a process that was a very time-consuming process. Some of you were here for that process and might remember it well. We started in 2016 and finalized that process in 2018. It required several meetings with IPERS Administration, a lot, a lot of data sharing between IPERS and Des Moines Schools, actuarial studies, a legislative change. We had to go to the legislature and get a change in legislation that would even allow us to do the IPERS change and then several participant meetings and retiree meetings. With that whole process, there were several challenges. One of the challenges were that the retirees of the plan, in the beginning, we talked about moving into IPERS and we talked about using plan assets in order to do that conversion. The retirees had opposition to using plan assets and were concerned about that, brought some legal representation and in the end, we determined that that wasn't the course of action that we could take was to use plan assets. There was also concerns about increasing the benefits for just the actives and not those people who had retired. And the retirees also expressed concerns about excess earnings and if excess earnings would continue under the plan and the overall funding of the plan in general, if we were to move those assets out of the plan and move them to IPERS. Another hurdle was data. As I mentioned, there was a lot of data sharing between us and IPERS. What was difficult was that the plans, because they're not the same, they were never intended to be the same. Our data collection was not the same. And so to share information about plan participation, plan balances, plan vesting, all of that required a lot of very manual, labor-intensive work. For an example, IPERS measures everything based on quarters of contributions. Des Moines Teachers measures it on years and if you've met a half a year, it counts as a year. So we had to go through and look through every person for every quarter to see if they qualified. So there was a lot of data challenges. Additionally, there were some exclusions that caused concern that IPERS had put into place. When looking at the transition of moving Des Moines Teachers people over to IPERS, IPERS would not take anyone who had retired under IPERS previously. So we have a few participants who worked somewhere else previously, retired under IPERS and then came to us under Des Moines Teachers. Under the IPERS rulings, they would not be able to go back into IPERS. There were people who were not actively participating in DMTRS, so those so-called inactive-active people that I mentioned before, who had left our employment but still had a balance. IPERS would not take them in this conversion. And lastly, IPERS would not take anyone who had what we call a QUADRO, which is a Qualified Domestic Relations Order and it is essentially part of a divorce settlement in which the ex-spouse receives a portion of the pension plan and they would not take anyone who had a QUADRO because it was an action with Des Moines Teachers and not with IPERS. And probably the biggest hurdle we faced, as Tom alluded to, was funding. You know, when we originally started this process, we had believed through our legal counsel that we could utilize plan assets to make this the funding hole for those participants moving over to IPERS. As the process transitioned, we learned that we could not do that. Additionally, the price tag of moving to IPERS, it started at $11 million and moved to $17 million due to changes in some of the IPERS assumptions and interest rates. So there was a big funding issue there that brought on significant challenges. So as a result, when we decided that that was not a viable option to go the IPERS route, the advisory committee reconvened very strongly and are very committed to improving the plan in any way that they can. We looked at, again, what would it, what would it look like if we moved to IPERS? What is, what is the major problem that we're trying to solve? And what we've really determined is the major problem is how do we close the gap of income replacement for the retirees under Des Moines Teachers in comparison to IPERS? We've done some changes. We've updated our investment policy. But again, there's limitations there because we have such a large population of retired employees. We obviously need to be more conservative because we need to have those investments there to pay off those guaranteed benefits. And by maintaining that more conservative investment approach, it doesn't get those active employees the returns that they are wanting and needing to in order to close that pension gap. Additionally, we offered an incentive last year that was for retirement that was unique to DMTRS participants, hopefully incentivizing them and rewarding them and providing a little bit of extra compensation within that incentive to account for those pension differences. We've also recently reached out to IPERS to see if we could reconvene those talks that we had a few years back. What would it look like? What would it cost if we were to reevaluate based on today's current census of the plan? When I reached out to IPERS, they, unlike, not unlike the rest of us, have been going through some unique challenges with COVID. They've also had a change in administration and had some changes in staffing. And they cannot commit to us to even look at doing the study until at least April. So I just wanted to let you know that we have looked at that. But again, they can't even look at giving us pricing or any timeline until at least April. So the plan, the committee has continued to talk and increasing employer contribution levels was one of the things that we felt that we could do in order to decrease that gap between the DMTRS and the IPERS participants. The committee had come up with a proposal to look at those employer contributions and how could we do that? Could we increase it within the plan? Can we increase it outside of the plan? What makes sense? The initial proposal from the committee was to look at increasing employer contributions within the plan. After several conversations and several meetings, we've had some change in direction on that and looking at perhaps increasing contributions to the plan or to participants, but doing it through a different vehicle. Increasing those contributions and putting it into a 457-401A plan would allow the participant to get an employer contribution into the plan. It would be outside of the DMTRS plan, which would eliminate the need for us to have to do plan amendments, get IRS determination letters and really allow us to do it on a much quicker basis than if we went back through the plan. And then probably the most important piece of the 457-401A option would be that participants could direct their investments themselves. So they would be given a choice of investment options and the participant would then be able to direct that employer contribution component of the plan by themselves. They would still have the Des Moines Teachers Plan that would be invested in the, in the way that we're currently investing, but a small portion of the employer contribution would be allowed to be participant-directed. So for those employees who wanted a more aggressive investment structure, they would have that option. For those that wanted a more conservative option, they would also have that option. So those are some of the things that we're looking at doing within the plan. And with that, I'll open it up for questions or discussions regarding the DMTRS and possible next steps.
Thanks. Thanks a lot for that Kathy. I just wanted to share a couple of other things that complicate this. Kathy talked about the, the contribution rate is, in DMTRS is determined by the employee's age at the time they enter the plan. So that's a peculiar aspect of this plan. Another confusing aspect of it, and we're not going to get this deep into it, but trust me, it's complicated, is how excess earnings are calculated. The long and short of it is it's really difficult to say, you know, let's, let's, let's say that we can't take our active employees and get them fully vested and transferred into IPERS. Okay, right now, that's not a possibility. It's one we're going to look into again. But right now, that's, that's off the table. But if we say, okay, we're going to shut down the plan and it only exists now for retirees, then all of our actives would then automatically have to go into IPERS. Right? So one might logically ask, why don't you just do that? Well, in IPERS, you need a seven-year, seven years of contiguous employment under IPERS to be vested, to actually have your benefits. If you're not planning on working for seven more years, then you're going to get short-changed pretty significantly. That's the, there's other complications, but that's kind of the biggest one. If we set a date certain, it doesn't impact this DMTRS employee in the same way that it impacts this DMTRS employee. So it's really not equitable to do it that way. We don't have a comprehensive solution right now. What I'm determined to do is to make some progress in a show of tangible good faith to our DMTRS actives that we're making forward movement in bridging that DMTRS-IPERS gap, which also is another complicating factor because there are so many variables to figure out what the difference between IPERS and DMTRS would be for an employee. Just because for some of the things that Kathy mentioned and some other factors that you can't just say, "We're going to do this for everyone and everyone's going to be made whole." So it's just, it's hugely complicated. The 457-401A idea, if it were adopted, would, would allow the district to make essentially an additional contribution to the retirement plan of the DMTRS active employees. As Kathy said, without modifying DMTRS, so that, that helps alleviate the concerns that our retirees very reasonably have anytime we talk about changing the, the plan documents. And it also spares us the, what could be an extensive waiting period for the IRS to come back to recertify our plan. The other piece about this approach that I like is that we can change it anytime we would like and it's completely portable with, with the employee. So they can take that plan with them even if they're not able to take DMTRS with them. So I think there are some real benefits to moving in that direction. Something that I'm a bit loathe to mention at this time because I still need more information, but I've had a couple of conversations, the second one, Shashank and Kathy joined me with a firm out of Texas called TCG that has done a ton of work in the public pension arena, including helping some organizations with, with more employees than ours transition from a school district plan into a state plan. We had, what I thought, and I'll let Shashank weigh in on this, or Kathy, if you have more to add to this. But they, it was, it was a fun conversation to have, the second one especially. One of the founders of the company who's been in the business for 45 years kept asking questions about DMTRS and we kept answering them. He said, "You're right. I haven't seen a plan like this before." But I think they were, they were sort of, of, they liked the idea of the challenge of it. I think that, that was intriguing to them. And the scale of the project that we have, while it seems monumental to us, our active, the number of actives, the active actives, as Kathy calls them, is relatively speaking, a small number. So even if we have to do, you know, individual calculations in some, you know, following some, some process for each one, that's, while it's time-consuming, it's not completely undoable. So after I had an initial discussion with one representative from TCG, then Kathy and Shashank and I had a longer discussion later last week with, with two gentlemen from TCG. They, they were very interested in at least learning enough to see if they thought that they could help, but they were very confident that they, they can help. We don't have word back from them. We sent them a bunch of information so that they can actually, you know, the plan documents being the first and foremost, so they can better understand. But a couple of things were really encouraging to me. Number one is they said, "How well is your plan funded?" And we said, "It's fully funded." And they said, "No, really, how, how well is your plan funded?" I said, "It's, it's fully funded." So that's a huge, you know, that's a huge win in, in, in the, "Let's, let's close DMTRS down for our actives and, and get them in a different place." And the second was that they've worked, as I said before, with organizations, public organizations that needed to transition way more than 150 people into some other vehicle. So they're looking at that, the documentation that Kathy sent them. I'm expecting to hear back from them by the end of this week in order to see if they really have interest in, in working and which, which they won't do unless they think they have a viable solution for us. And if that's the case, then we'll be inviting representatives from the DMTRS committee to sit down with, with us and the, and the, and the TCG team to see a different way through this. It's, one of the challenges with this work is that there's not really even legal counsel in this area that wants to touch it because it's a, it's such a one-off that they're, they're loathe to give competent advice that we can count on. But, but, you know, we, I do see light at the end of the tunnel. I'm hugely encouraged by the conversations that we had. So although I don't have anything concrete right now, they, they, oh, the other thing that I was going to mention that was encouraging is they, they, they thought that a 457-401A is a great step for us to take and likely is going to be at least a piece of whatever the final solution ends up happening, happening to be. So they didn't see a reason for us not to move forward with, you know, an initial... So they didn't see a reason for us not to move forward with, you know, an initial start on this. So if it takes a little bit, you know, a few more months or whatever the timeframe would be for us to come up with a final resolution to this, we could start the 457 401A and at least get some forward momentum going. So that's probably way more than I needed to say, but Shashank, do you have anything to add?
How many currently active employees are contemplating or near retirement age?
I don't know that we could give you a good answer to that. We had, Kathy, do you remember how many were eligible for retirement last year when we offered the retirement incentive?
I don't have the exact number. I want to say that about half took advantage. So we had 52 take advantage, so that would lead me to believe that there was around 100 that were eligible last year.
So we probably have a little north of 50 that are, that could retire if they so chose. Now, it would be IRS eligible, you know, 55 and over many years of experience.
The reason I ask is because of the timing of this IFRS conversation being pushed off until April at the earliest. They have to declare before that timeframe, correct?
Well, I don't know if they need to declare before then if they want to retire. I'm not sure on that. But you did make me think of one other point that I wanted to make sure I mentioned. We don't want our DMTRS folks to retire. So we want to make things right, but we don't want all of it to come in the form of some retirement incentive because we have really talented, experienced, valuable staff that are in DMTRS and we want, you know, we don't want the reason that they retire to be that if they don't, they're going to get shortchanged. So I want to make sure that that point's very clear as well. I would also say that I don't think, I don't think that there's good reason to think that the price tag will have moved very much.
Are you referring to the price tag for the, to move folks to IFRS?
If we moved folks to, if we moved folks to IFRS and purchased all of their, so they wouldn't lose any years of service, yeah.
But wouldn't it have gone down because we have so many people took retirement, 50 people took retirement a year ago? Wouldn't that have?
Well, that part would, yeah, it would go down, but on a per, you know, on a per person basis, I think it's probably going to be about the same, yeah.
And the funds that, the non-plan assets, understanding that plan assets is politically challenging with the retirees, so the funds that would be used to supplement, let's say, a switch to IFRS, are those management levy funds?
No. Do you want to walk through that, Shashank?
Can you hear me now? Perfect. So if we had to shift the employees from DMTRS to IFRS, that is not a cost that will come out from the management fund. If we had to give them an incentive to retire, that money will come out from the management fund. And as you know, management fund is not a challenge, Rob, for us. If that was the case, we would have moved forward. And the cost, when we had done the early evaluation, as Kathy mentioned, was around $17 million. But today with half that workforce, we're still talking, if anything, between $7 to $10 million. So the cost is still fairly significant if we had to move all the employees over there. But that's a pure guesstimate, and this is what IFRS will have to work out if we do engage them in that service.
Another question. What's the hurdle with looking at active employees differently depending on their, how close they are to retirement? So theoretically, employees that are in the younger scale have more years of service, or less years of service, would be more inclined to take an, to want to go over to IFRS because they're going to be in the, they're going to hit their seven years, it's not going to be an issue. But those that are closer, even the ones that are eligible, but even the ones that are closer, the ones a tier below that, they're not going to necessarily want to go over to IFRS because they don't want to lock themselves into seven more years. What's the obstacle to looking at the actives as two different groups?
There's a potential concern, which is less of a concern to me now than it was a few weeks ago after talking with the TCG folks, but the potential, there was a potential of doing something different based on age and then, and being, having that be legally discriminatory on age discrimination. The other piece is it's a simpler, arguably, arguably it's simpler for somebody who's further than seven years away from retirement to just, you know, jump in and do that. But those that are close to retirement, they have to start making some pretty, you know, life-altering decisions, maybe sooner than they want to make those decisions. You know, that's one part of it. And then the other challenge is for that second group, that point of retirement group, presumably we would be using some sort of retirement incentive, but the board cannot commit management funds for retirement incentive except in the year the plan is going to be implemented. So we can't, we can't pre-commit to using the management fund, you know, for a series of years so that we can take care of a, you know, a certain age span that if, because it would be, we did explore this, what if we said, and I'm just making these dates up, what if we said in five years, we're shutting the plan down? But each of the next five years, for DMTRS actives, we're going to have a retirement incentive and structure it such that each year, depending on which year you, you, you know, the payout would be different based on which year you took it and what that equivalent gap would be. But there's no way to do that. We can talk about it, we could, we could agree, all of us around this table, that that's the right idea, but then you guys couldn't take any action on it until, you could for this upcoming year, but then you couldn't for the following year until next year. Well, then, who knows, you know, the board composition's going to change, the, who knows what else, what else is going to change from a fiscal perspective to make it more or less attractive to do that? And so that puts our, the folks in that second group in a real precarious position, you know, hoping that we're doing the right thing, but not us really not being able to tangibly do that until a year prior to offering the package. That's the biggest kind of dynamic that makes that.
And typically, an MOU wouldn't go beyond one year if we were all to sign an MOU for future years?
I think that the, I think the MOU, and I'm not an attorney, I think the MOU would hold a little weight because the board is legally prohibited from committing the dollars that it takes to effectively hold up their end of bargain.
Yeah, so we couldn't, we couldn't have an MOU that just said, we will, we will commit to this action without actually committing to allocation of funds.
Yeah. Because the only way, the only way the board could effectuate that MOU outside of a year is to illegally commit funds.
I had another question. So I think Rob and I are the only ones that have been around long enough to have lived through this in the first iteration and to feel like we got so far to resolution with IFRS and then to have everything sort of implode. I think my question really goes to, you know, sort of keeping all of our options open and keeping all oars in the water at the same time, and wondering if, number one, there are factors or influences that have changed at IFRS that give us any sense or any hope that waiting till April and going through the study or whatever will yield a different outcome than where we ended up last time? And if so, what are they? And then secondly, it feels like this TCG group may have some promise, and as we're waiting for the IFRS piece to play out, can we on parallel tracks be moving down a road that maximizes what TCG brings while we're also waiting for the IFRS piece to play out? But I think my question really is, what do we think, what do we know about IFRS that has changed since the last time we went through this exercise that gives us a sense that something could be different in terms of the outcome? I don't want to feel like dragging anybody through all of that pain and agony again if we really don't believe that the outcome will be different.
Okay, so I, what I believe is that we should not be waiting for, you know, we asked the question of IFRS really for the sake of confirming what we think we already know. And we got the answer that we got. So I'm not interested in waiting around until April to see if something magically changed because we don't have reason to believe that there's anything substantially different in how they're going to assess, assess the risk that they're taking on, except for the point that Rob made, that we have fewer actives now than we did before, but on a per person basis, we don't have reason to believe that there's going to be much different. What I do think though is, I'm quite confident that moving ahead with a 457 401A plan is going to be part of our final solution, so why not get that started now and start, you know, having our actives feel the love instead of just talking about it? And I do think too, if TCG comes to the conclusion that, hey, I think, I think there is an avenue to get, to do some combination of move some actives into IFRS and what Rob said, to somehow bifurcate our existing group of actives such that nobody's going to be disadvantaged by having to make a forced choice about retirement prior, when they want to. I think we have them behind us because they do huge work with the California Pension System and a bunch of other states. I think we could, we could get IFRS to get on board and have a closer look if we, if we change the question that we're asking them, because we have more evidence that there's, there's something that's going to be beneficial to them, which is a long way of saying, we shouldn't wait for IFRS, I don't think. But I do think it may be, depending on what we are able to work out with TCG, it may be worthy of going back to IFRS and saying, look, here's, we have different circumstance now, we have some different ideas on the table, and we have a, you know, certainly an urgency of purpose, so let's, let's move that timeline up. But I don't think that we should let that be a barrier to us moving forward.
Tom, is this a time for staff to ask questions or does that come later? Or is this not, not an opportunity this evening for that? Because I, as all the options that are being laid out, I have a, I think a couple of questions that, you know, may help the board, you know, with that. So I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity tonight? And if so, when would that be?
Well, Wayne, this is a board work session, so typically the, there is not an opportunity for participation by those not on the board or those presenting.
Thank you for that, Tom.
But Wayne, if you want to, if you want to share that with me via email, I'll circulate it and make sure that we incorporate it into future discussions and get you the answers that we, that we can.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification.
You bet. Thanks, Wayne.
Can I just ask one other question? And I feel like I shouldn't ask this, but I want to ask it because for a lot of people, I feel like it's the elephant in the room. From a layperson who's outside looking in, they would equate the selection that people made with regard to DMTRS versus IFRS with a decision comparable to how you go about doing your investments. And I think it's really important to help people understand, number one, why we're even considering trying to make someone who made one choice that may not be accruing the same level of benefit that the other choice is, making them whole. So I think it's really important that we put that out there because I think the public may not fully and completely understand the rationale behind all of the work that we have put into not only this decision, but why it's important to figure out how we level the plan to deal for our staff.
Yeah, so I will, I will tell you that I was unaware of the discrepancies between DMTRS and IFRS, you know, until we started working on this several years ago. My motivation was to get the district out of the pension business because I just, it's a, it's a very specialized area and it carries with it a lot of responsibility and a lot of risk. And we need to be, you know, putting all of our focus on serving our students and not being everything to everyone. And so what initially started driving this was to get us into a position to be able to get the district up from underneath, running its own pension system. Through those discussions, it became clear to me, and certainly it became very clear to our actives, that there was a significant discrepancy, again, that varies literally by individual on a number of different factors. But it's not unusual for somebody who's retiring now under DMTRS to have a pension, you know, monthly pension check that's half what it would have been had they been in IFRS. So it's, it's significant. It's different, varies by person, but that's not an unusual circumstance. When people made the decision to join either IFRS or to join DMTRS, you know, there are a number of complicating factors there. One, as Kathy shared earlier, DMTRS is essentially, for all intents and purposes, unchanged since its inception in 1953. And it's governed, you know, by the board, but by the recommendations of the DMTRS Advisory Committee. IFRS, which the district also participates in, is run by IFRS. You know, they have their own structure, they have representatives of different committees and so forth, their own management structure. But our district does not impact how much the employer contribution is, how much the employee contribution is, how much the defined benefit is going to be, what the rules are for when you can retire, et cetera, et cetera, and so forth and so on. So IFRS, if you want to use the term, has evolved over time and pretty regularly, and I'm sure, well, Terry, I'm sure you've seen a number of times where we've had to approve increasing the employee or the employer contribution because IFRS reassesses where they are and they make changes in order to keep the plan solvent. Well, you know, even if you joined the plan, if you made, had to make the decision 10 years ago to join DMTRS or IFRS, the, that equation has changed since then. And if you made the decision many years ago, it was, it was different, even more different still, because there was a time when DMTRS was the smart bet, that it would have actually, it would have actually been a, had a higher payout than what IFRS does. And so there's a couple of things. We want to, we don't, we want people to be treated well. We have had the discussion though, some uncomfortable discussions on that topic about, well, you know, I wasn't here when you made the decision and I would create DMTRS, I do want to fix it, but you can't hold me responsible for your choice. That's, that's an important element to it. But we also don't want to be at a competitive disadvantage with our competing employers and have our good staff leave because they can't afford not to. You know, if, if I'm in DMTRS right now and speaking all honesty, if I'm in DMTRS and I, even if I have, you know, 10, 15 years in, or maybe even more than that, if my projected retirement payout is that dramatically different from IFRS, and I don't think anything's going to change that, then I'm, you know, likely going to be looking for a position somewhere else so I can get my seven years in IFRS to cover some of that difference. So there's a, you know, there's a practical piece. So there's a, you know, there's a practical piece to it. There's a, you know, a kind of an ethical piece to it. Um, and ultimately, you know, we want to keep, keep the staff that we have and we want them to be well taken care of and, and not have this um, you know, be thinking of retirement as a black cloud over their shoulder.
Tom, can I add a couple of things to that?
Oh, sorry, go ahead Kathy.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to add in that, that, you know, throughout the DMTRS timeframe, um, there has been a few changes in the contribution schedules that we have modified schedules after Ipers has made a modification to their contribution schedules. So there was a time, I, I believe there's two different, three different iterations of the schedules. Um, there's Schedule A, which is the original, and then there's, I think, a B1, 2, 3, 4, 5 that we did um a graduated increase over a five-year period. And then there's uh Schedule C as well and that we did a graduated increase over a period of time. So there has been some, however, the last um increase was several years ago and it has not kept up with the Ipers increases. And I will tell you, um, a participant talked to me and told me, you know, people always say, I made the choice. And yes, I did make the choice, but the choice I made is not the same choice as it is today. The, the Des Moines teachers that I signed up for 10, 20 years ago is not the same Des Moines teachers that it is today. The contribution schedules, the discrepancy between what the employee and the employer contribute on the, on the plans has grown. There's a larger discrepancy between those two plans. And so I might have signed up knowing that there was a difference in the plans and the contribution rates. But again, that contribution discrepancy has grown over time. And so what I signed up for is not necessarily what it is today. And I thought that was a really good way of explaining it and putting it in a context that everyone would understand.
Thanks Kathy. I'll just add that um, the, the real reason that we wanted to have this work session tonight was that we do hope to, to bring to the board some action while this, this particular board is still seated um so that we can kind of get the ball rolling. And we wanted to, to make sure that um there was an opportunity for you all to better understand the decision that we were going to ask you to make because it is, and if you have more questions, you know, later on, don't hesitate to ask. This is a really um peculiar plan and um it's, it's in some, some respects served, you know, served DMPS really well. I do think it's time for us to, to close it down and um make sure that our, our existing staff are well taken care of.
So one final question out of me. It, it seems like there's potential to, you know, possibly with TG, C, TCG's guidance on this to approach kind of a couple of different ways to address the 296 actives. So so what I'm, I'm here, can you mute? I'm just getting an echo. So and, and, and the thing that keeps sticking with me about the 457 is I completely support the idea of, listen, let's, let's, let's do what it's a good thing to do. Except if you commit dollars that way and you might have to go a different direction, at least for some active employees, would it have been better to have those dollars in reserve to help facilitate the eventual transfer, say, to, to Ipers for those folks? And so I guess what, what, where I'm at with that is, I know the DMTRS board, they put together a proposal to increase the contribution this year. I just wonder, so every dollar that's in, so if I'm a DMTRS active, if I'm one of those folks, every dollar that's in my account makes it that much easier for me to ultimately get over to Ipers because it's one less dollar that the district has to pay, right? The nu, the number, the, the amount of cash that I'm carrying over to Ipers is, means that there's less cash that the district has to add on to, to, to buy my way in. So I guess what I'm wondering is, is it, is it worth considering doing the 457 for everyone that wants it, but increasing the contribution for everyone that would prefer that? Assuming that perhaps the younger actives would be more inclined to increase their, their, what's, what's within their, their DMTRS account. The, and, and it might ultimately save the district some money. Because instead, because if I, if I go, if I'm a younger active and I'm eventually going to go over to Ipers and I'm carrying my, you know, a hundred dollars in my DMTRS account and I'm carrying $50 in my 457 and the district's going to have to add another $200 to get me over to Ipers. But if I'd had that 50 in my DMTRS, wouldn't that ultimately save the district some money and advantage that employee? And hearing myself say that, I'm, I'm, I'm reflecting on how complicated this all is. So you're exactly right about that.
I mean, I think, yeah, I think, I think that's definitely. I think that the likelihood that we'll be able to have enough dollars, even with the employees' contribution in, in um, in DMTRS to purchase the years, you know, do the full transfer like we had originally intended, where everybody who goes over to Ipers has all of their years of service captured in Ipers is pretty slim. Um, not to say that it doesn't shrink the, you know, the gap. Um, I, yeah, so I'm, I'm hesitant to give a, a definitive response to that. Shashank, do you have uh two cents worth to put in on that?
Sorry about that. So, so I think we could increase the contribution rates historically and maybe Kathy can remind me. But there's either a state or an IRS guidelines which we'll have to comply with. So we'll have to get the sign off from IRS, which at least the guidance which our lawyers have provided can, may, may not happen and they are heavily backlogged. So it is quite possible that that also could take a fair amount of time. Does that ring a bell, Tom or Kathy?
Yeah, that's, that's that's very much the case, yeah. The, the, making, approving plan document changes like this is very low on their priority right now. And we've had a number of, of folks um tell us that, don't hold your breath for that to happen. And, and frankly, I'm really uncomfortable bringing to the board a change in a pension system for approval um without having the IRS have been signed off on it. I just think the risk is too, too great.
I have a couple of questions um regarding that, that 457, the, the 401, whatever. Would, would the employee have an option to also contribute to that?
Yes, they would.
Okay, uh, and I know one of the, the, the bones of contention there is the district wants to contribute this amount and, and the, the DMTRS would rather have this amount or whatever. Would it be possible to set up some sort of a floor, but then that maybe could increase if the employee, a matching sort of thing? So say, everybody gets one and a half, but if I put in three, you guys would match up to three, something like that? Just to encourage that kind of saving? Would, is that something that could play? And I don't know if that's popular or not, I'm just thinking right now.
Correct. I, I think that can be explored. It'll be like a 401K plan that companies have, yeah? It can be explored. We have not checked on that, so I don't know, but s- seems possible.
Yeah, that's just something I was thinking about, you know, some sort of splitting the baby, I guess. But uh, my, my other thought was if I, if we, well, I've been thinking a lot about the possibility of, if I were a person who was, you know, under 40 in DMTRS and I just wanted to get out, could I just resign? The district would have me back and I could re-sign up for Ipers. Now that's kind of up to Ipers as far as I understand it. But if, if we approached them and they were, they seemed okay with that, so then we could avoid all the mess of a full merger and I'd start in Ipers at year zero. I'm still going to work teach for another 20 years anyway, let's say. Could we have a mechanism where those people who opted for that, we could guarantee their place back and some of their accrued sick leave and whatever and their longevity and all that? Because I wonder if we did something like that, that it would be kind of twofold the benefits here. Those, the younger people would be then out of the, the DMTRS system, which would allow us to close it a lot sooner. We don't got to wait for that 20, that, you know, that 33-year-old to actually get to retirement. Plus, they could get kind of a dual pension then in retirement, which could make up a lot of that gap. So if, if Ipers would be okay with an idea like that, could we do something where we'd say, yeah, come on back and, and here's your sick days and your, your longevity too?
Sorry, for some reason, I think that is not a possibility. Ipers does not allow it. We can re-check. Kathy or Tom, do you remember something?
Yeah, we, I don't remember specifics, but I do, I do know that, that from legal perspective, if, you know, like if, like if Mr. Hammond, you know, resigned at the end of the year and then we happened to hire him back, um, probably that would work. I think if more than one or two um did it, that would catch the attention of Ipers. And I think they would say that we're violating the, you know, that we're, we're trying to um do an, an end around um and undermine the system. So then I think that would raise all sorts of red flags and probably do us more harm than good. But we have, we've discussed that. But I don't think it's something that we can do and um do at scale and, and um, and pull it off.
Yeah, I had a, I, I just think it's worth discussing with them because like, I don't, I don't really see which system is undermined except getting us out of, out of DMTRS sooner. Like they want more people in it. They're, they're not starting at year 30 or whatever, so I don't know. I, I think it's worthy to, worth to ask.
Yeah, we, they, they have new leadership now too, so it's definitely something that we can explore again.
I think there was something in there too, if I recall, about um actually having to sever employment.
Lee, Tom, that you are wanting to bring something to us in the next meeting? You had said bef, while this current seated board is in place.
Yeah, in the next two meetings is what we're hoping, yeah.
So it'd have to be the is it the next meeting? Next meeting is the last meeting that this board is seated. Won't swearing in happen at the beginning of the, no? Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Um, I don't think I can speak beyond, um, you know, the next couple of weeks. I, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that before the end of this week yet, we'll have a substantive conversation with TCG and have much more clarity about what, what we're confident will be the final, you know, the final direction that we could go in. That's going to take some time though because um even if they have everything all in a nice neat little bow, which they won't. Um, at the end of this week, we, we need to make sure that we're um, you know, we're sitting down with the, with the DMTRS um advisory committee and, and getting full understanding and buy-in before, you know, before we ask the board to take a, a huge definitive step. However, I don't, I don't think it's out of, out of, um, out of, out of uh the realm of possibility that I could come to you, um, you know, the next week or two weeks and say, um, we don't have the whole thing worked out yet, but we're, you know, we're sure that a 457 plan is going to be a part of the solution. So I'm confident, I mean, I'll, I'll defend the recommendation that I make if I'm in a position to do that. Um, I don't want to take action just for the sake of taking action because we had, we had said, you know, we'd wanted to get something done while this board was still seated because this, this TCG development is very recent. I'm really glad that, that um, that we've made that connection. But um, it, it's much more important to do something that we don't, we're not going to have second thoughts about and, and want to have and somehow try to reverse course halfway through the action. So I, I, I really, it is very much my desire to have something um in front of you um prior to the uh, prior to the, you know, for at least the, if not the next meeting, the meeting following. But I, I won't do that unless um I'm absolutely confident that it will be, the step we take is going to be a contributing factor to the, the ultimate long-term solution. So that's, unfortunately, that's as, as well as I can um clarify future steps right now.
Hey Tom, just another quick question. Um, I appreciate sort of not rushing to a decision if in fact there appear to be some additional questions that need to be addressed and just making sure we get it right is really, I think, the most important thing. But I also wanted to ask if there are any legal things to be considered with regard to any changes that we need to take place? Anything from a legal perspective that would need to be reviewed? Um, again, I just think it's important that we take whatever steps we need to do it in the right time, in the right cadence and with all of the right rigor that makes us put in a position where we don't regret having made the wrong decision.
Yeah, that's, that's a, a astute point and one that we, we take maybe more seriously than the DMTRS actives would prefer. But um, we're dealing with, we're dealing with our, you know, with the pensions of our most valuable people and we don't want to do anything that um goodwill can't, you know, goodwill's not going to go very far if you're running into a, a, a problem with the IRS. Um, so we're, we're going to make sure that we have all the I's dotted, T's crossed before we bring something forward to the board. Um, not only for the, you know, the protection of the district, but for the protection of the eventual retirees that we're, we're trying to get into a good place to be there someday.